Call this July 9th regular session to order. First of all, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Does that move?
Mr. Tool.
Second.
All in favor? Pass is five zero. Next, I need a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Tool.
Second.
Mr. Hammond, all in favor? Pass is five zero. Recognition, Mr. Cawcote.
Thank you, Mr. Ransom. Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. We have several people to recognize this evening, so if you'll step forward, join us up front. As you do, I will point out that the art this month is being provided by students from Dove Creek Middle School. These slides will be on display in this room this evening and then also on the hallway throughout the month. Beautiful pieces, and we appreciate Ms. Leila Burden and her staff, or her students, rather, for providing these for us. First this evening, the board will recognize the FFA State Agroscience Fair awardees from Malcolm Bridge Middle. Elizabeth Morgan and Sloan Getchy, second place in Division II Animal Systems. Theo Ibing, third place in Division I Animal Systems. Asher Grace Bailey and Nora Brubaker, second place Division II Social Systems. Deirdre Marotra, second place Division I Social Systems. Ava Allred and Sophia Holmes, second place Division II Power Structure Technical Systems. Christopher Butler, second place Division I Power Structure Technical Systems. Chandler Teeman and Caitlin Kramer, second place Division II Food System. And Deheer Marotra, state winner in Junior Prepared Public Speaking. Their advisor is Emily Courson. Next, board will recognize the 2025 FFA State awardees from North O'Conne High. Blake Allen, Devon Busby, Josh Chancy, and Colter Steinkamp, state champions in Senior Poultry Judging. Lena Steinkamp, Colter Steinkamp, and Devon Busby, grand champions in Lamb County Group. Colter Steinkamp, grand champion in Senior Dough Fitting Team. Scarlett Harris, grand champion in FFA Reserve Senior Dough Fitting. Aiden Allen, Hazel Brubaker, Anna Lee Greer, and Brady Smith, third place in Junior Poultry Judging. And Hazel Brubaker and Analia Nunez, third place in Division IV State Agroscience Fair Plant Systems. Their advisor is Tim Griffith. Next, the board will recognize the 2025 FCC LA State Leadership Conference awardees from O'Conne County High School. Abigail Tolett, Annabelle Bloom, I'm sorry, Annabella Bloom. And Zoe Small, first place in Nutrition and Wellness. And Zeph Murrow, first place in Instructional Video Design. Their advisor is Kristy Glaze. Next, the board will recognize the 2025 State Science and Engineering Fair awardee from Malcolm Bridge Middle. Navi Mishra, gold medalist in NOAA Taking the Pulse of the Planet. The advisor is Elizabeth Patrick. Next, the board will recognize the Class 3A Girls Soccer State Champions from O'Conne County High School. Camilla Clifton, Ella Hudgens, Caroline Elsperman, Frankie James, Catherine Ricketson, Jordan Graft, Jasmine Lockamy, Berkeley Veal, Drew Martin, Darby Baran, Sarah Worth, Kate Walker, Claire Elsperman, Addison Mooney, Alex Clifton, Sidney Jackson, Ava Davis, Sophia Clifton, Maddie Cass, Allison Winters, and Hayden Jones. The coaches are Justin Hamby, Mark Leviton, and Anna Gentry. Next, the board will recognize the Class 3A Girls Tennis State Champions from O'Conne County High School. Cadence Keys, Caroline Smith, Hayden Stoltz, Jenny Hu, Mary Linda White, Ellie Johnson, Nichia Patel, Marin Torres, Abigail Tolet, and Mahik Desai. The coaches are James Bloos, Jim Bloos, and Christine Rainwater. Next, the board will recognize the Class 3A Girls Track and Field State Champion in the 800 Meters. Cadence Keys. The coaches are Jacob Forster and Kendra Houghton of O'Conne County High School. Okay. She's running, 800 meters. Board members, we have one final recognition, but I'll ask you to return to your seats for this one. Mr. Ransom.
Thanks, Stephen. Y'all bear with me, it's hard to wrap up 13 years into a short summary like this. Stephen and I were talking earlier today. I hadn't ever really considered it, but 13 years is just right. So Dr. Branch came in with the kindergarten class and saw them all the way through graduation, so he gets to graduate too. But we'll start off with a list of long accomplishments that I've summarized with Stephen's help. Thank you, Stephen. We'll start off with teaching and learning. Highest achievement in O'Conne County High School's history. Increased graduation rate from 90.5 to 99.1 over the course of 12 years. Increased ACT scores to the number one ranking in the state at 24.5. Increased SAT scores to number three ranking in the state with an average of 1161. Increased AP achievement rates to 94% from 72%. During that time, Dr. Branch shook the hands of 8,512 students at graduations. That's a lot of handshaking, I don't know if y'all realize, but some of them come up there with a firm grip, so you gotta take Advil before and after. Special education. Increased the number of special education teachers from 65 to 86. Raised the special education graduation rate from 84% to 100%. It's the highest graduation rate in O'Conne County Schools' history. Increased the parent survey participation from 65 to 712 parents and the positivity rating from 54% to 97%. Human resources. During Dr. Branch's time, he has recommended the hiring of over 2,100 new teachers. All six of the current cabinet members are division chiefs. 12 of the current division directors, 12 of the current principals, and 18 of 19 of the current assistant principals. That's 98% of the current principals were recommended for hiring under Dr. Branch's leadership. Business services. During his time, he oversaw a combined budget of over $1.15 billion in 13 years. Recommended a cumulative pay increase from 2015 of 21.5%. Recommended step increases for all educators from 22 to 30 years. ACS has been ranked the number one school system in Georgia for financial efficiency by the Georgia Department of Education and the Governor's Office of Student Achievement five straight times in these years. For operations, he's implemented over $184 million building campaign to modernize and enhance instructional and athletic facilities to include building new schools of Dove Creek Elementary and Middle School and the Instructional Support Center. Renovations to all 12 campuses, additions to six schools, and modifications to three schools. For athletics, he added turf fields and track resurfacing at both high schools. Updated lighting at both high schools and middle schools. Resurfaced all tennis courts and added lighting. For buses, he recommended purchasing over 60 buses for a total of $6.3 million. Also, all those buses, in case your kids have not told you this, are air-conditioned, which is a great improvement. And instituted a bus replacement cycle plan that turns over buses every 20 years as they need to be replaced. Student services. Collaborated with the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners on student resource officers and implemented the first SRO program in O'Conne's history. Recommended the Raptor Visit Management and Reunification System along with Sentegix as we were one of the first in the state to employ Sentegix. Many other systems have come and followed our lead and come here for training over the years because of his visionary accomplishments. Recommended the addition of security vestibules at all schools. Added multiple sports, including esports, dance, flag football, lacrosse. Slow six pitch softball was brought back. And recommended allowing sixth graders to play in middle school athletics. For communications, we have over 23,000 followers, which I believe you were the communications director when you first showed up. And recommended live streaming for BOE meetings for easier communication after COVID. Technology. Recommended and oversaw the purchase of 36,000 student Chromebooks, over 3,700 desktop computers, over 2,300 staff laptop computers, 1,600 projectors and whiteboards, class audio systems for all elementary schools, and a one-to-one Chromebook program that came about during COVID. It's a short list, there's many other accomplishments over 13 years, and we're very proud of you and glad that you're one of our own. We appreciate you. Thank you.
And that concludes recognitions.
Michael, I'd just like to make a quick comment if you don't mind. I just wanted to express my appreciation for Dr. Branch. It's, um, yeah. Thank you. It has been my privilege to serve under your leadership on this board. I'm grateful that my kids graduated before you left and just the amazing impact that you've had on our county. And I think a lot of people don't realize how influential and respected you are in the state and across the nation. You are impacting publication, public education far beyond just O'Conne County's borders and getting that recognition because you've done such an amazing job here. So just thank you, and I look forward to all the great things that are to come. As I always say, I've come to learn in this role that a job in public education is a lifestyle choice. It's not just a job, and I don't know how y'all do it, but especially in higher leadership positions, it's a sacrifice to you, to your wife, to your kids. There are things that you give up to have this job, and again, I'm just grateful that you did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Points of Pride with Dove Creek Middle. Mr. Eddy.
Good evening, the board's kind of hard to follow that, so. Good evening, the members of the board and Dr. Branch. As you know, I'm Dr. Mike Eddy, and I have the privilege to serve as principal of Dove Creek Middle School. First, we would like to sincerely thank the board for allowing us this opportunity to share some of the accomplishments and highlights that we make, that we've made this past year that Dove Creek Middle, a place of pride. Your support makes it possible for our students and staff to grow, lead, and succeed in meaningful ways every day. At Dove Creek Middle School, we take immense pride in the accomplishments, culture, and community that defines us as Knights. Our Points of Pride reflect the values we hold: academic excellence, student growth, leadership, and a strong sense of community. Whether through outstanding academic performance, award-winning extracurricular involvement, or the everyday acts of kindness and integrity shown by our students and staff, the spirit of the Knights is always present. Tonight, we're especially proud to have this presentation by students who have demonstrated one of our core Knight characteristics, traits that embody what it truly means to be a Dove Creek Knight. These students have gone above and beyond in showing the character, commitment, and leadership that make our school community so special. Their actions remind us why we celebrate our Points of Pride and continue to uphold the Knight tradition of excellence. This time, I'll turn this over to Mrs. Thomas, Dove Creek Middle School Assistant Principal, to discuss our mission and vision, as well as a little bit of our Knights of the Month.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Thomas, as Dr. Eddy said, and I'm one of the assistant principals at Dove Creek. It's a privilege to open a brand-new building, and so I thank you for that honor. As a leadership team, one of our first goals was to create our vision and our mission. We asked ourselves, when people think about or talk about Dove Creek Knights, what do we want them to say? What do we want our students to be known for? Thus began several meaningful conversations about what it means to be a Knight. The statement that shows on the screen was developed by a team of teacher leaders along with ourselves, as well as getting student input. What you will see tonight is the fruition of our vision from those early days. Being a Dove Creek Knight is not about being perfect. It is about being a person of high moral character and resiliency. It's about being one's best, even in the face of adversity. The best people that can tell you about this is our students. Each student you meet tonight represents one of the traits of being a Knight. Oftentimes, these students go unnoticed because they're always doing the right thing. But at Dove Creek, we want to make sure that they know that we see them, we appreciate them, and they are our leaders. So it is my honor to introduce you to our very first Knight. This is Baron Bahar.
I'm Baron Bahar, and I just finished sixth grade, and I'm going to be talking about knowledgeable. A knowledgeable person is one who has or shows a clear understanding of information about the world or a particular subject. At DCMS, being knowledgeable looks like listening to your teachers in class so you can be knowledgeable about the standards you're learning, or listening to the announcements in the morning so you can be knowledgeable about what is going on in your school.
My name is Isaiah Lawhead, and I just finished sixth grade at DCMS. And the N in Knight stands for noble. A noble person has personal qualities that people admire, such as honesty, generosity, courage, et cetera. At DCMS, being noble looks like treating people with respect, so think before you speak and use manners. Having appropriate classroom behavior, so participate and listen. Striving for excellence in all that you do, do your best, and being honorable and a person of integrity, do what is right. As a Knight, what can you do to be noble?
Hello, my name is Charlotte Clark, and I just finished seventh grade at Dove Creek Medical School. And today I'm talking about what innovative means in Knights. An innovative person uses a process or a series of steps to create something of value that doesn't currently exist. To solve a problem or address a need. At DCMS, being innovative looks like innovation improves upon prior knowledge, requires vision, use of creativity, being persistent, and collaborate with teammates and experts from different fields.
I'm Lila Long, and I'll be talking about generosity, and I just finished eighth grade. A generous person is one who unselfishly gives up their time, encouragement, money, or items to someone in need. At DCMS, being generous looks like helping to straighten up after class or an event, supporting classmates and staff with actions and words, and serving through charitable giving at school and in the community.
I'm Liam Pasternak, and I just finished up seventh grade, and I'm going to talk about humble. A humble person does not believe they are better than others and may have healthy self-esteem without needing to boast. At DCMS, being humble looks like celebrating and empowering others, staying open to constructive criticism, accepting praise with grace, being selfless and generous, practicing the art of listening.
Um, my name is Alex, and I just finished the seventh grade, and I'm going to be talking about tenacious. If someone calls you tenacious, you're probably thinking, I meant, you're probably the kind of person who never gives up and never stops trying. At DCMS, being tenacious looks like persevering, especially when times get tough, having a positive attitude, asking questions when you don't understand, doing extra practice to understand harder concepts, and setting clear goals, taking steps to achieve them.
Hello, my name is Aubrey Sauer. I just finished sixth grade, and today I'm going to be talking about successful. A successful person works to achieve one's desired visions or planned goals. At DCMS, being successful looks like being organized, learning time management, avid reading, asking questions for help or understanding, getting sleep and eating healthy, and having a growth mindset.
And good evening, I'm Lisa Vaughn, and I'm not going to tell you what grade I just finished. I am honored to serve as the other assistant principal at Dove Creek. Just want to thank our students tonight for providing a snapshot of what it really means to be a Dove Creek Knight. These students are leaders in our school, and they represent the spirit of Dove Creek. And what they don't realize is that themselves and all of their peers are helping to build a foundation that's going to help so many and impact so many kids for years to come, and we're so thankful for them. Dr. Branch and members of the board, we want to thank you again for all you have done to support Dove Creek Middle in its opening. As is evident tonight, we are very proud of our school. For the past two years, it has been a joy for all of our stakeholders, for our students, for our parents, our faculty, our staff, and our community to be a part of establishing this school. But we could not succeed without your support and dedication, and for that, we are very grateful. Thank you for allowing us to share with you tonight, and go Knights!
Next, we have the superintendent's report.
Board members and staff, community, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for the recognition. It's been my honor and privilege to serve this community. Want to thank our high school leaders, parents, and students. As the board knows, we had the opportunity to graduate 687 O'Conne County High School and North O'Conne seniors. May 23rd, I know that was especially significant for Mr. Ransom and Ms. Parrish as you got the dual role of being a parent and a board member that evening. Very accomplished class, $6.2 million in scholarships, that is excluding Hope and Zell Miller. They've been accepted to 150 universities, colleges, and military academies across the United States. Appreciate, and, excuse me, and it was a great cap to a special, special year. So as we say, and I joke with the kids, I should have had a cap on and been able to throw that up with them. As you saw, we were able to celebrate several state championships tonight. North O'Conne Girls Golf will be celebrating as well. Fifth straight title for the Fifth straight title for them. O'Conne Girls Soccer was the third straight championship, and O'Conne Girls Tennis were state championships this year as well. We got many, many students and community members that are looking for their kids to be the state champions, and thankfully, our coaches and staff members are willing to spend their summers running athletic camps. And so the Warriors and Titans of the future are honing their skills at camps through June and July. And I've been asked to make sure that everyone knows registration is still open for some of those camps, and it's available on social media as well. Want to thank Dr. Yancey, he was not able to be with us tonight, but he did a wonderful job of setting up a first-of-its-kind-in-our-systemsafety summit that was held last week. All principals, all assistant principals, and many district office personnel were on board. And at those meetings, along with Dr. Harden and myself, the Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency, the O'Conne Sheriff's Office, the O'Conne Emergency Management, the Georgia Association of Educational Leaders, and then two of our safety partner companies, Synthegix and Schooldog, were present. And it was a very valuable summit covering a variety of topics. We had great feedback from our leaders at all levels. And again, want to thank Dr. Yancey for his work on that. The last thing I have for tonight's report, board members, is to just thank you for your participation in the GSBA Annual Conference last week, and the time that you took away from your family and your work to hone your skills. Tonight, we do have board norms and protocols listed as an action item. Those board norms and protocols are the same board norms and protocols that you have approved previously. But each year, Georgia School Boards Association asks that the school board and governance team agree to those board norms and take the public act of approving those in a board meeting. So we'll have those later in our action items and also our meeting dates for the 25-26 school year. That concludes superintendent's report, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Branch. Next, we have teaching and learning for Ms. Whitaker. Welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Branch and board members. The O'Conne County Schools Teaching and Learning Report for June 9th contains four items of information and no action items. The first item of information is Teacher Appreciation Week. During the week of May 5th through 9th, schools throughout our county recognized Teacher Appreciation Week by honoring educators and staff members with a variety of thoughtful gestures. From handwritten cards and floral arrangements to food trucks and special treats, our dedicated teachers and staff members were celebrating for their unwavering commitment and impact. The second item of information is Advanced Placement Exams. O'Conne County Schools administered AP exams for 27 courses during the FY25 school year. These courses range from AP Art History to AP Calculus to AP Physics and include four world languages: Chinese, French, Latin, and Spanish. These offerings reflect the district's commitment to providing a rigorous, diverse academic experience that prepares students for college and career readiness. The third item of information is CTAE End of Pathway Assessments and Scholarship Awards. In May, CTAE pathway completers took part in the End of Pathway Assessments, earning industry-certified credentials that are valued by our workforce partners. We are proud to share that students from O'Conne County High School earned 121 industry credentials, while students from North O'Conne earned 100 credentials. Highlighted certifications include 16 Certified Clinical Medical Assistant Credentials, 29 Certified Personal Trainer Credentials, and 16 FEMA Community Preparedness Credentials. All are nationally-recognized credentials that allow students to demonstrate workforce readiness and gain a competitive edge as they pursue employment and post-secondary opportunities. Ten OCS students are currently preparing to attend national leadership conferences this summer. Eight middle school students, four from O'Conne Middle, and four from Dove Creek Middle will travel to Anaheim, California to compete in the FBLA National Competition. Additionally, two high school students from O'Conne High will represent our district at the FCCLA National Competition in Orlando, Florida. While these trips offer exciting opportunities for our students, they can also come with significant cost. We are thankful to the OCS Alumni Association for their generous support in helping fund and offset these expenses. Qualifying students were invited to apply for travel scholarships, and the Alumni Association awarded a total of $750 across three scholarships. We especially appreciate that, for the first time, middle school students were included in the selection process. Our final information item is the K3 Standards-Based Report Card Revision. With Georgia's new K-12 ELA standards taking effect in 2025-2026, our district has updated the K3 Standards-Based Report Card to align with these changes. The revised standards emphasize early literacy, including a new foundations domain focused on phonics and evidence-based reading instruction. Selected K3 teachers from across the district have contributed to revising the report card to ensure it reflects classroom practice and the new standards. This alignment will provide families with clear, standards-based feedback on progress towards standards mastery. That concludes the teaching and learning report, unless there are any questions.
I just have a comment, Ms. Whitaker. I want to celebrate you and our high school principals and teachers for the CTAE pathways. I think that's very important work, and I'm encouraged to hear so many students have taken advantage of that, and they're finding success in that. So, you know, as always, I encourage any parent and student to participate in as many of those classes as possible, because that's how we find out what we want to pursue after high school. So that's amazing. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. Next, we have Student Services, Mr. Kofler.
Good evening, Dr. Branch and board members. The June 2025 Student Services Report includes three items of information and four action items. And don't worry, everyone, Dr. Yancey is coming back. I'm just filling in. The first item of information is regarding our Student Code of Conduct. We have no changes to the Student Code of Conduct at this time. As we do on an annual basis, we are presenting the Student Code of Conduct for the board's review for next school year, and that is attached in assembly. The second item of information is to acknowledge our high school athletic accomplishments for the 24-25 school year. Both high schools have had a tremendous run of success over the past five years, and this success continued this school year. Two attachments in assembly summarize the performances of both high school athletic programs. The first is a breakdown per school for overall athletic department achievements at the state and regional levels, and the second attachment shows state and regional finishes per school by athletic team. Together, both high schools had eight team state championships, two state runner-ups, eight Final Four appearances, 23 region or area championships, and both schools finished in the top three respectively in the Georgia Athletic Directors Association Cup points in the state. A few notable performances to recognize: North O'Conne's football team winning the 4A State Championship; North O'Conne's boys basketball team winning its second straight state championship; O'Conne County's boys cross-country team winning its third straight state championship; O'Conne County girls soccer team winning its third straight state championship; and North O'Conne's gymnastics team winning its sixth straight state championship. I want to take this opportunity to applaud our student athletes, parents, coaches, athletic directors, and the school communities for a job well done competing this school year. And I know I echo the sentiment throughout our two high schools. We appreciate the board's continued commitment to athletics and look forward to continued success in the years to come. Our third item of information is an update on our School Resource Officer Program. Our team was notified by Captain Mark Smith that Corporal Johnny Richards is no longer with the SRO Division. As of today, the following members are designated to our School Resource Officer Program: Captain Smith, Lieutenant Maxie, Sergeant Dorsey, Corporal Neesmith, Corporal Swisher, Deputy Shook, Deputy Gallagher, and Deputy Reynolds. School assignments for all of these School Resource Officers for the 25-26 school year are still to be determined by our administrative team and the O'Conne County Sheriff's Office. Student Services has four action items for the board meeting this evening. The action items are four out-of-state field trips. The first field trip is for O'Conne County Middle School FBLA to travel to Anaheim, California later this month. The second field trip is for the North O'Conne Girls Golf Team to travel to Pinehurst, North Carolina to compete in a tournament. The third field trip is for the North O'Conne Boys Basketball Team to travel to San Diego, California in December to participate in a sanctioned basketball tournament at Torrey Pines High School. And the final field trip is for the Malcolm Bridge Middle School Band and Chorus to travel to Charlotte, North Carolina in March of '26 to perform at Carowinds. The superintendent's recommendation is to approve the out-of-state field trips as presented. This concludes the Student Services Report, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kofler. Next, we have Special Education, Ms. Corin Gold. Welcome.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch for your final board meeting tonight. The O'Conne County Special Education, June 9th, 2025, board report contains one item of information and no action items. We had a magnificent May for Special Education. Our first item is to discuss our high school high-tech program that we partner with. It's an outreach program, part of GVRA. It provides our high school students with employment and career opportunities. This year, they organized a computer contest where nearly over 150 applicants across the state participated, and only about 70 were selected to receive a computer. One of the students was an O'Conne County High School senior, Paul Diwags. He was a 12th grader. He actively participates in activities for the high school high-tech, and he also created a PowerPoint presentation that centered around the importance of a PC for transition to work or employment after high school, and he won. So we were very proud of him. The second is our 10th Annual Mock Interviews that we hold here in O'Conne County. This is a collaborative effort between North O'Conne and O'Conne County High School. This milestone marks 10 years of preparing our students for the real-world job experiences through invaluable practices with community engagement. This year, our interviewers were Dr. Jason Branch, Superintendent of O'Conne County Schools, Mr. Brock Tool, School Board Member and Business Owner; we had Ms. Olmer, the Program Director from Destination Dogs; we had Ms. Wright, she's the owner of O'Conne County Preschool Academy; Ms. Walton, the manager of Publix; we had Ms. Rosar, Representative for Food for Kids; Ms. Kim Woolbright, the owner of Joe and Sam's; Ms. Clark from Child's Closet; and then Mr. Rusty Stewart from Atkins Ford of Winder. Their presence is a testament to the importance of community involvement and the connectivity in supporting our students of all abilities. I also want to express my gratitude to all the teachers, the support staff, and the administrators who work tirelessly with our students every day and give them that confidence to always say, "Yes, I can." And lastly, for November, we had our CivITAN Student of the Year. The International O'Conne County CivITAN Students recognized two students, also high school seniors, from one from O'Conne and one from North. Their mission is to serve students with all abilities. Therefore, the club designates an award for two seniors to represent their service in academics, arts, athletics, community service, self-advocacy, and what their transition plans are after high school. And we had Makaya Parnell and Savannah Patton receive those awards this year. And that concludes the report for Special Education, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Corin Gold. Next, we have Technology, Mr. McCullers.
Thank you, Mr. Ransome. Good evening, board members, Dr. Branch. O'Conne County Schools Technology Services, June 9th. Board of Education Report contains no items of information and one action item. Action item number one is the Technology Surplus. The Division of Technology Services conducts an inventory analysis at two key points in the school year. Technology has finalized the spring technology surplus list based on our technology replacement cycle, which is attached in assembly. This includes our student Chromebook devices, laptops, desktops, and server pieces. Again, this is in assembly for your approval. Superintendent's recommendation is for the Board of Education to approve the surplus list as presented. And that simply is the Technology Services Report for this evening, unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mr. Kofler.
Good evening, board members, and for one last time, Dr. Branch. The Human Resources Report this evening contains two items of information. Our annual biometric screenings are scheduled for tomorrow and Wednesday here at the ISC. This is a convenient and confidential wellness opportunity for our employees and their families to check on their health. During the screening, a healthcare professional will collect basic measurements such as height and weight, and draw a small sample of blood to evaluate important health markers, including cholesterol, glucose, hemoglobin, and triglycerides. These screenings not only provide a clearer picture of overall health, but as an added bonus, participants will earn 120 points toward the goal of achieving a gift card through the state Health Rewards Program. It's a small-time commitment that can have a big impact for our employees' health and their wallet. Our second item of information is the GASP Best in Class Retention Practices Award. GASP's Best in Class Award recognizes districts across Georgia for excellence in areas such as employee handbooks, recruitment, retention, website development, employee benefits, and strategic practices. This year, O'Conne County Schools Human Resources Division was honored with the Silver Award of Excellence for our retention practices. This recognition highlights our ongoing commitment to celebrating and supporting our employees. Among the practices that contributed to this award are our monthly Pursuit of Excellence recognition, spotlighting different job families throughout the year; our annual service pinch, which honors staff who have dedicated 10, 15, 25, or 30 years to O'Conne County Schools. Most recently, we celebrated individuals with over 40 and 50 years of service to O'Conne County Schools. This year, we also introduced our alumni badges, which recognize employees who received some or all of their education here in O'Conne and made the choice to return and serve the next generation in our schools. Another standout initiative is our unique approach to selecting the District Teacher of the Year. While most districts rely on central office staff to make this decision, we believe the real experts are still in the classroom. That's why our District Teacher of the Year is chosen by a committee of six previous Teacher of the Year honorees with zero influence from the central office, even when they jokingly plead with us to help break a tie. These efforts to value and recognize our employees are part of why O'Conne maintains a retention rate well above the state average and why we were honored with this award. This follows last year's awards earned for excellence in the area of website development for our user-friendly one-stop-shop for leaders, and employee benefits for our hands-on, personalized approach that includes one-on-one support for anyone who needs help navigating or enrolling in their benefits. I'm incredibly proud of our HR team and the heart that they put into supporting every one of our 1,100 employees. I want to take a moment to recognize Dr. Lisa Manross, Suzanne Graves, Anna Davis, and Christina Williamson for their outstanding dedication and exemplary service. Their work is a key reason why O'Conne remains a destination district for top-tier talent. This concludes Human Resources Report this evening, unless there are any questions.
Mr. Kofler. Next, we have Business Services, Mr. Adams.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Branch. Again, to also echo the final time. The Business Service Report for tonight's meeting contains nine items of information and four action items. Our first item of information is our May Cash Balance Report. As of May 31st, the closing cash balance represents a negative 7.79% decrease over last month, but our state funding projections are very stable. Our cash balance for May is still strong, and we are well-positioned to meet our financial obligations for the fiscal year. The second item of information is our list of all vendors paid in May. We paid 517 vendors $1.6 million for the month. Our third item of information is our Budget Report for May. Our revenue collections are positive with a 99.25% collection rate. Our revenue collections are positive with a 99.25% collection rate. Expenditures will be expected to be at 91.6. Our monthly reports show us at 89.2%. This indicates that we are on target for the period, maintaining a balanced financial position, and we will continue to monitor these figures closely as we head towards year-end close. The fourth item of information is our ELOS Collections Report. We've had a decrease of negative 5.88% in collections over last month, but an 8.5% increase over May of last year. So our collections are still strong year-to-date, and I believe we've hit $13 million in collections. The fifth item of information is our ELOS 6 Report. Revenues and expenditures have been updated through the month of May. Our sixth item of information is an update on our federal funding allocation and expenditures for the month. These funds are reimbursement-based, and we continue to see these funds as they come in throughout the fiscal year. Our seventh item of information is Board Regulation DIBR Financial Report: Capitalization for Capital Assets. This regulation has been updated to reflect changes by the federal government in capitalization thresholds. We've gone from $5,000 to $10,000, and we've also matched some other state agencies that have gone to $100,000 on buildings, land improvement, land, and intangibles. Our eighth item of information is Board Regulation DM-R1 Reserve Funds Fund Balance. This regulation has been updated to reflect our agreement with the Georgia Department of Education Strategic Waiver School Systems Swiss program, which weighs the 15% fund Our ninth item of information is our Budget Development Calendar. Our budget process is on track, and as a reminder, the fiscal year tentative budget for general funds and federal fund expenditures was approved at the May 22nd, or excuse me, May 12th board meeting. The board was also presented a detailed expenditure by primary function area during the 421 Business Services Presentation. The tentative budget hearings were advertised in the legal organ on 5/15/2025, and budget hearings were held on 5/22 and 5/29 as required by law. Our first action item is the Final Fiscal Year '26 General Fund Budget for Your Consideration. It includes estimated expenditures of $120.5 million and estimated revenues of $119.1 million. These figures are based on an estimated rollback mileage rate of 13.919 mils, which represents a 2.32 decrease from the fiscal year 25 mileage rate of 14.25. The fiscal year '26 considerations of $7.8 million are salary steps at $1 million, health insurance employer contribution increase of $3 million, our teacher retirement employer contribution increase of $1.1 million, and our school resource program at $2.5 million for a total, again, of $7.8 million. We have budgeted expenditures, continuation expenditures of $112.6 million, and additional considerations of $7.8 million, bringing total expenditures to $120.5 million. With additional considerations, salaries and benefits are at 88.5% of total expenditures, while operations are at 11.5%. The 88.5% covers around 1,100 employee salaries, TRS, health insurance, and retirement. With the remaining 11.5% allocated covering all operational costs of the school district at $13.8 million, these costs include district-wide utilities, repairs and maintenance, curriculum, and of course, transportation. I asked the superintendent to recommend approval to adopt the fiscal year '26 General Fund Budget and the tentative rollback mileage rate. While the Tax Commissioner has informed us that the Tax Digest update is forthcoming, we do not anticipate significant changes to the rollback rate. Therefore, we recommend proceeding with the adoption of the tentative mileage rate at this time. Our second action item is the Fiscal Year '26 Federal Funds for Your Consideration. It includes total anticipated revenues and expenditures of $7.6 million. These grants are reimbursement-based, therefore, we must initially outlay the funds and then await reimbursement. I asked the superintendent to recommend approval to adopt the final Fiscal Year '26 Federal Fund Budget. Our third action item is Board Policy DIB Financial Reports. This regulation has been updated to reflect changes made by the federal government to the capitalization threshold, as I mentioned earlier, as well as updates from other state entities. Again, this is taking that items from $5,000 to $10,000 and the rest from $25,000 to $100. The superintendent's recommendation is for the Board of Education to approve placing the Board Policy DIB Financial Reports on the table for public review and comment until the July 7, 2025 Board of Education meeting. And our fourth and last action item is Board Policy DJEAA Board Approval. Due to increased cost of goods and services, $25,000 no longer represents a high-value purchase. Updating the threshold to $100,000 better reflects the current economic climate and aligns with best practices in public sector procurement. The superintendent's recommendation is for the Boards of Education to approve placing the Board Policy DIB Financial Reports on the table for public review and comment until the July 7, 2025 Board of Education meeting. And that concludes my report unless the board has any questions.
Peter, I'd like to thank you for the budgeting process and everybody involved. I think y'all did a great job. Y'all allowed us to maintain local control with smart financial management and still provide taxpayer relief with the full rollback. So, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have other comments? Thank you, Mr. Adams. Next, we have Operations with Dr. White.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Branch. Congratulations on your last meeting as well. Operations has five items of information for this evening and four action items for this month's regular session. The first informational item for Operations is an update on our Energy Report. Our kilowatt usage per day for 1,000 square feet has been updated for the month of April. The second informational item is our Transportation Update. For the previous month, we had 46 field trips, 16 athletic trips, 17 special education trips, 139 buses deployed, for a total of 7,033 miles. Our third item of information is an update on school nutrition participation for the month of May. Board members, you'll see that we saw an increase in participation for breakfast of 0.33% and an increase of lunch participation of 2.24% as compared to May of 2024. Our fourth item of information is an update on our school nutrition health inspection scores. Each kitchen is inspected twice a year by the Health Department for a total of 24 inspections. For this school year, 20 of these 24 inspections were perfect 100s for an average district score of 99.63, which is the highest in the last five years. I'd like to commend our Director of Nutrition, Caitlin Brand, our Nutrition Managers, Assistant Managers, and Nutrition Support Staff for their dedication and hard work. Our fifth item of information is an update on nutrition breakfast and lunch costs. As a reminder, nutrition is currently supported through revenue generated from meal purchases only. The current price of breakfast was set in 2014 and lunch was set in 2017. Over the last decade, we have seen increases in food, labor, and supply costs. We're proposing an increase of a quarter to breakfast and lunch prices. The current and proposed meal prices have been attached to this report for your review. Although this requires no action by the board, we wanted to update you on this change. Our first action item for tonight's board meeting is the FY '26 School Food Bid, which is an annual action item for the board. As a reminder, we are a member of the Georgia Educational Cooperative, which is a group of 42 school systems that pool their buying power for competitive pricing. Superintendent's recommendation is to approve the Georgia Educational Cooperative for the next school year for the products presented. Our second action item for tonight's board meeting is for new ovens at North O'Conne High School. The current ovens are in need of replacement. It is the superintendent's recommendation to approve mobile fixture and equipment at a cost of $42,171.70. This project will be paid for using Georgia DOE grants and school nutrition funds. Our third action item for tonight's board meeting are illuminated bus signs for the remainder of the bus fleet. Transportation has been piloting these illuminated bus signs on 19 buses to allow motorists to easily identify a school bus in a variety of weather types and improve motorists' reaction time. Superintendent's recommendation is to approve Thomas with a bid of $55,414.68 for 58 illuminated school bus signs. This project will be paid for using ELOS and general fund dollars. Our fourth action item for tonight's board meeting are fully illuminated stoparms for the remainder of the bus fleet. Transportation has been piloting these illuminated stoparms on 19 buses to increase motorists' awareness of bus stops and ensure high visibility of the stoparm in all conditions. Superintendent's recommendation is to approve Thomas with a bid of $55,272.34 for 58 illuminated school bus stoparms. This project will be paid for using ELOS and general fund dollars. This concludes the Operations Report unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Dr. White.
Thank you.
Operations Facilities, Mr. Rickles.
The O'Conne County Schools Operations and Facilities, June 9th, 2025 Board of Education Report contains two items of information and one action item. First item of information is the League Custodian Meeting. The May League Custodian Meeting was held on Thursday, May 8th, and was hosted by the team of O'Conne County Primary School. The team discussed summer equipment readiness, pressure washer usage, and upright vacuum care. Our custodial teams are be commended for the rigorous work that ensure our schools are clean for health. Second item of information is the Construction Update. The district-wide generator project, we've completed the generator at Column Ferry, Malcolm Bridge Middle, Rocky Branch Elementary, O'Conne Middle. We have startup of the generator at O'Conne Elementary this week. Work continues at North O'Conne High and the IT Building. There's work remaining to finish the project this summer. Next is O'Conne High Practice Field Lighting. Lights are completed and operational. Next is North O'Conne Door Hardware Improvements. The existing hardware has been removed from the doors, and we've prepared the doors to accept the new hardware. The new hardware has been ordered and expected to arrive later this month. Maintenance shop paving. The work will begin at the site this week. And lastly, O'Conne High Parking Lot addition. The work has begun. Demolition's underway. New curb and gutter will begin this week. We do have one action item, and that's for the Column Ferry Elementary School Playground addition. It's the superintendent's recommendation for the board to approve OC Playscapes for Column Ferry Elementary School Playground Project for a proposed cost of $75,000. This project will be funded with principal account and PTO funds. And that concludes the Operations Facilities Report unless there are any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Rickles. Next, Communications, Mr. Cawker.
Thank you, Mr. Ransom. Good evening, Board members and Dr. Branch. Communications Report this evening contains two items of information. The first item is May Social Media Information. O'Conne County Schools had 50 social media posts in May with an average of 14,985 views. Four of the top 10 posts focused on the two graduations, the honor graduates, and the senior walks. Four more featured team and individual state champions. For the month, 20 of the posts were viewed more than 12,000 times, including two at 50,000, three at 40,000, three at 30,000, and two at 20,000. O'Conne County Schools gained 153 followers in May, giving the district more than 23,000 across Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter for the first time ever. In addition, the OCS Newsletter released on May 29th had 8,544 unique opens, which is a rate of 68.8%. The industry average for education is 39%. We thank the parents, students, community members, businesses, and media outlets that follow and engage with the OCS social media accounts. The second item of information is the May Highlights Video.
Communication.
Yes, sir. We have two O'Conne County residents signed up to address the board. Before I invite them up, I'll read this. Policies BCBI and BCBI-R1 state that only O'Conne County residents or school system employees may address the board, and that members of the public shall conduct themselves in a respectful manner that is not disruptive to the conduct of the board's business. The board allows three minutes for those who sign up prior to the meeting. Please state your name, address, and topic. The board requests that you refrain from making any disparaging remarks about school system personnel. There will generally be no response to comments or questions posed by citizens at the meeting. All comments and questions will be taken under advisement by the board. However, any board member shall be free to respond and make public comments if he or she elects to do so. To any citizen wishing to provide documents for board members, please submit them to the Director of Communications before the meeting or prior to addressing the board. Please remain at the podium during your public comment time. Our first citizen is Sarah Danis.
Welcome, Ms. Danis.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sarah Danis, and I graduated from OCHS in 1997 and the proud parent of two O'Conne students. I'm here because I love our schools, not because I want to be a complainer, but I come back to you again this month with continued concerns about the health and safety of OCES for its staff and its students. Because as far as I know, nothing has been done about the concerns that several parents have approached you with. Parents have been signing a petition of concern, and it's up to over 250 stakeholder signers at this point. And I realize this is your last Board of Education meeting, Dr. Branch, but the rest of you are going to continue to be here, and we don't want to have to come here and talk about this anymore. All we want is acknowledgement of our concern and to have things followed through. I hope that you don't think that parents would come up and lie about the fact that teachers are coming to us and encouraging us and begging us to continue speaking out. We're not making that up. Teachers are the boots on the ground. They're the reason why O'Conne County Schools is number one. It's not because of fancy people dressed up behind computers. It's the teachers. It's the administrators that are doing the work and helping our kids to thrive and to all the wonderful raves that we've heard about, all the things that our kids are doing in sports and in academics. And we need our teachers and our students to know that we're concerned about them. And if our teachers don't feel like their health matters, then how does that impact the underlying current of the school? All we're asking is for a company whose specialty is mold and mildew to come out and inspect the school. That includes the third-grade pod where my son was all year. That includes the gym, where I personally witnessed water bubbling up in the middle of the floor. And then the rest of the school as well, just to see how things are. It's an old school. It's an old school. Yet, in an email response to me from Mr. Ransom, he stated that Operations now considers this matter resolved with no further action necessary, and we just don't understand. The school is old. It's normal to need repair. You know, you can't slap a coat of paint on something and expect it to be brand-new again. That's just not how that works. For the impermeable gym floor to have water bubbling up, you know, it feels kind of ironic. It's supposed to be impermeable. At what point was it impermeable? Is it still under warranty? If so, can someone come out and check it? If not, if that impermeability was stated 10, or 20, or 30 years ago, whenever it was installed, whenever that impermeable label was received, it doesn't seem like it's impermeable anymore because I have, I witnessed it with my eyes, the water that was coming up in the middle of the floor. And if the water is in the middle of the floor, what else is happening? Dr. Branch, I think that, I know that you have led this community and this school district for so long, and I appreciate that, and I know people that know you in the community and that you're wonderful in many ways, and you're stepping away from this position, but don't leave us with this. Don't leave us with this concern. I can't sleep well at night, and I don't know how you all, knowing that our kids and our teachers are having to deal with this. So, please consider helping us to get this checked out and get this fixed with the potential problem that's there.
Thank you, Ms. Danis.
Actually, I have a follow-up comment to Sarah's comments. Thank you so much for coming to speak, and, you know, as you know from our conversations as the Board Members and Dr. Branch know from my conversations with them, I do want to acknowledge your concern, and I personally, as an individual, do think we need to have specific mold testing at the elementary school so we can determine if there are elevated levels of mold. And if there is elevated levels of mold, what types of mold are present? I think that's important for us to determine the next steps there, and that's something that I'll continue to advocate for. But I did want to say in follow-up to that, I think everybody up here and probably everybody in this room, you know, student safety is at top of mind. That's the number-one concern, and I am hopeful and I feel confident that at the end of the day, we will come up with a positive solution to move forward on this. So, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teri Thompson.
My name's Teri Thompson. I live at 1100 Silver Leaf Road in Watkinsville, and I'm here to talk about the Community Works Report that we submitted concerning the Superintendent's search. So, we had 23 people show up at a meeting that we held a few weeks ago, and some of the people who are in the room were at the meeting. I wondered if they could stand up and we could thank them for their help. Dr. Margaret Holt facilitated the meeting. And first, let me just back up a little and talk about what Community Works is. It's a brand-new organization that we just started in the last couple of months, and we want, we wanted to form a group of volunteers in O'Conne County to address needs that are in the county that are not addressed right now. So, one of those needs we saw was a way, a vehicle for the community to provide input to the Superintendent's search. We know that you guys put out a survey online, but that didn't seem to be sufficient for some people. They wanted to be able to comment, not just check boxes on a scale of 1 to 5 about something. So, at any rate, we had, as I said, 23 people meeting, come to our meeting. There were parents, there were former teachers, there were people who don't have children, but all of them are taxpayers in O'Conne County. And there are quite a few comments and issues were made about what we would like to see in the next Superintendent. So, there were, we asked people to comment on three, in three areas. One was personal and professional characteristics that they'd like to see in the next Superintendent. The other was interview questions that they would like to see asked, and then finally, issues and concerns that they would like to be the next Superintendent to be aware of. And I'm just curious, I know we sent the report out, did you all have a chance to read it? Okay. That's fantastic. And I have a copy here, but we were told not to come up if anybody would like another copy. And then in the summary on the report, there were four key issues that seemed to be coming up time and time again over the 90 minutes that people stood up and spoke, spoke about what they wanted to see in the next Superintendent. The first was the need for clear, transparent communications between the Board of Ed and the public. The second is the need to address the mold issue. That was a big topic. People are quite concerned about the staff in the buildings as well as their children, and they were equally concerned about bullying issues that they feel aren't always being addressed upfront, and a lot of parents have concerns about that. The third key issue was widespread intimidation of teachers and staff. It was brought up time and time again that teachers and staff don't feel comfortable coming forward, and they feel like, they just don't feel comfortable with coming forward with negative or negative comments that need to be addressed. There's a strong, I'm out of time, and the last issue was the need to address the quality of education for all students, not just those that are college-bound, but those who are falling through the cracks and are socially promoted. So, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Ransom, that concludes Public Communication.
Thanks for having us. Dr. Branch? Yes, sir. As stated earlier, the Georgia School Board Association encourages all Board Members and Governance Teams to adopt the Board norms and protocols each year. Those have been attached for your review. We recommend approval as presented.
And a motion? Mr. Tool?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
Okay, we've also attached the Board of Education meeting dates for '25-'26 school year, and we recommend those be approved as presented.
So moved. Mr. Tool?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
You heard the presentation on our yearly technology surplus, and we would recommend that surplus list be approved as presented.
Ms. Parish?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
It pleases the Board, we can take D, E, F, and G together. They're all out-of-state field trips. We'd recommend those be approved as presented.
You have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Tool?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
Up next is the Column Ferry Playground Project by the school leadership and school PTO. We'd ask that be approved as presented. Costs the $75,000 funds to be provided through the principal account, the local school level, and PTO funds.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hammack and Mr. Tool, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
Up next are FY '26 Georgia Educational Cooperative School Nutrition Bids. Of course, doing that saves us money by cooperating with all of our systems around the area. We'd recommend those be approved as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Tool?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
All right, and you heard we need some new ovens in North O'Conne, so we'd recommend those be approved as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Tool?
Second.
Ms. Parish, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
If it pleases the Board, we can take both the illuminated bus stop signs and the arms at the same time. So, we would recommend that outstanding safety enhancement to be approved as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Hammack, Mr. Tool, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
Okay, up next, we did have the Board Policy DJEAA Board Approval. The Board, we'd recommend approval to place the, this item, and we can do all of these at one time, or we can do them separate to place all of the Board Policies on the table for review, public input. You would then approve or reject those Board Policies in the July meeting, or they could also be modified as needed throughout that process.
So, I'll make a motion to table the DJEAA for, further in July for the actual wording of it, approval.
Okay. So, we would need a second and a vote on that.
Need a second?
Second.
Well, to be clear, you're asking to table it completely, not for review, but...
Because we could still, if we kept it on there, we could still review it and make changes.
So, yeah, that's right. So, my, correct. So, the motion would be to leave it there for review for the July meeting.
So, as is. Okay. So, we have a motion for Mr. Tool. We need a second?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Or Hammack, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
All right, up next is Board Policy DIB Financial Reports. Again, recommend that for approval.
Motion?
So moved.
Mr. Tool?
Second.
Ms. Parish, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
Okay, up next is the General Fund Budget for FY '26. Lots of great work done by the team and Peter and his group as well, and we just appreciate all the outstanding work that's been done. We'd recommend approval of the General Fund Budget as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Tool?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes 5-0.
Okay, same for the Federal Funds Budget for FY '26. We would recommend approval as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Tool?
Second.
Mr. Hammack, all in favor? Passes 5-0. We do have a need to enter executive session to discuss personnel matters, and I need a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion that the Board will adjourn to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon personnel matters as described on the affidavit to be attached to the minutes.
Second.
Ms. Parish and Mr. Tool, all in favor? Passes 5-0.